Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, October 7th, 2019. Roll call please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Urban. Vice Mayor Knott.
Here.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. May we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Urban?
Support.
Moved by Vice Mayor Knott, supported by Commissioner Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For our opening ceremony this evening, I'll ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and read... And stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States for America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two other items under the opening ceremony. I think we'll do the proclamation first and then I'll ask Commissioner Cunningham to join me at the podium for a Numizoo presentation. The proclamation will be handled by Commissioner Griffin.
Yes, I'd like to ask at this time if Sonya Kevnik and Jamara Sims step to the podium. Whereas citizens of Kalamazoo stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills; support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends; build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults; engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children; and whereas Kalamazoo Youth Development Network has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults; and whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 24th promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities; and whereas more than 28 million children in the United States have parents who work outside the home, and 19.4 million children have no place to go after school; and whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights; and whereas Kalamazoo is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to complete in the national... Excuse me, to compete in the global economy. Now therefore, on behalf of the 52nd City Commission, Mayor Bobby J. Hopewell, the city of Kalamazoo, does proclaim October 17th, 2019, as Lights On After School Day in Kalamazoo, and encourage all residents to commit and engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
Thank you for your support. Lights On After School, just to kind of tell you a little bit about what it is. It's an advocacy event where hundreds of youth will be downtown Kalamazoo. They're touring and learning about businesses, exploring careers, and advocating for high-quality out-of-school time programming. The youth will be touring City Hall, Kalamazoo Valley Community College, Kalamazoo Community Foundation, the Kalamazoo Valley Museum, Radisson Hotel, Metro Transit, Michigan 60th District Service Office, and the Gazette Newspaper Offices. That is our Lights On After School advocacy event, and I will let Jamari tell us a little bit about our other event coming up.
Kalamazoo will be also holding a youth-led conference formed on October 15th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., located at the Kalamazoo First Condon Church. We'll have this event over the years to prevent youth-led... To provide youth-led... Leaders' opportunity to engage in discussions of identified community issues.
Commissioner Cunningham, will you join me at the podium, please?
Thank you, sir. So, as you will see to my left, to the audience's right, we have two items that are gifts given onto the city of Kalamazoo. To give a little more context on these gifts, the city of Kalamazoo has a sister city, which is considered Numizoo-Kalamazoo, I'm sorry, Numizoo-Japan. And so Numizoo and Kalamazoo, for the last 56 years, have been in a partnership where we either A) go visit them every two years, or B) they come and visit us every two years. Initially, this relationship was built out of business opportunity. It has grown into what is called a cultural exchange. A little more backdrop, in 2015, when I first served as a city commissioner, I received the opportunity to go over to Numizoo and took advantage of it. And at that time, I questioned, what is a cultural exchange? I had been to probably a 10 or 12 different countries before going to Japan. But upon engulfing myself in this experience, you know, I had never been to a country that just thought operated, conducted in such a vastly different way than here in the United States. So, once I was able to experience that, one of my personal passions is being continuously involved in this committee because I understand the importance of it. I don't know who the famous person is, but there's a quote that says, you know, "Traveling isn't for vacation, it's for education." And so I really pride myself on going to different countries and picking up what I can learn. So, a little more context about these two gifts. The one on the right is a gift to our actual committee, Numizoo Sister City Committee. The one on the left is the actual gift to the city government of Kalamazoo, or the city of Kalamazoo. The unique thing about that, the one on the left, is it looks like paint, but it is actually not paint. It is little pieces of paper that created that entire vision. So, the artist was very talented and unique, and, once again, we are very appreciative of this relationship. I also had the honor to have two of my comrades coming with me, one of which was the Honorable Jim Ritzma and the Honorable Mayor Bobby Hopewell. So, you know, once again, the building of this relationship, I think, was strengthened by having these two individuals there for this experience. I think that we will have long-term relationships. I think that, in the same sentence, we will also see some potential economic development opportunities in the future. So, those are some of my potential goals, but...
One other thing, commissioners, in speaking with the city manager and as we were traveling, we've received a number of these amazing gifts from Numizoo over the years, and Pushkin as well. And I think we're going to, or you may have the opportunity in the future, to find a way to ensure that these are placed in areas that people can enjoy and understand the relationship, and a little more visible than most of these items are right now. I think the city manager has some thoughts about that, his team, and so hopefully that will move forward. The other thing I want to say is that the people of Numizoo, the government there, the Numizoo Committee, and certainly our host families, take very much pride in having us come and be a part of their culture and a part of their community. It is a distinct honor, and they honor us in so many ways that I'm not used to. You know, I'm used to just hanging out, and you don't need to do this, you don't need to do that. You know, I can take care of that myself. Well, they were very attentive to all of us, and everything from meals to when we're traveling, to make sure that, you know, they were giving us money to buy things. And I'm thinking, you know, we have jobs, we can do that. But they are very attentive to all of us when we're on this major cultural exchange. So, we're hoping that we can be as attentive as well to them when they come next summer and participate and get involved in Kalamazoo. It was an exciting trip, it was an honor to attend this with my two friends and colleagues, and I hope that if you have opportunity, commissioners, that you take the opportunity to participate in the Numizoo Exchange. Thank you. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes? Hearing none from the commission. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak on items under F, that's our consent agenda, that item will need to be moved to the regular agenda. If you have such an item, please indicate it this time. Hearing none. Communications Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to call up Mr. Stephen Brown, our Foundation for Excellence Coordinator. He has a presentation tonight on the draft distribution of the 2020 Foundation for Excellence dollars. So, he would like to walk you through that and show what great work is anticipated next year.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Hopewell, Vice Mayor Knott, Commissioners, City Manager Ritzma. Thanks so much for your time. I'd like to be brief but thorough this evening. What we have before us is something that I'm really honored to present, which is the 2020 Fiscal Year Draft Budget Allocation from the Foundation for Excellence to the city of Kalamazoo. Now, what you're going to see this evening is a budget timeline. You're going to see discussion of continuing and new projects from 2019 and 2020. You're going to see a little bit of talk about the community engagement effort that we undertake to make sure that people in the city know what we're doing, and that it's a reciprocal process that we're always hearing feedback from community members and from board members. We're also going to talk a little bit about the tools that we're putting in the hands of community members that they can use to stay in touch and stay up to date with the information. And then we'll get into the budget itself, and there'll be time for questions and answers if there are any. I've got up on the screen the mission of the Kalamazoo Foundation for Excellence, which was decided on by the Board of Directors. And I think this is a really important place to start because it highlights what the laser-like focus of the Board has been, which is to fulfill the mission of the city, which is, of course, the Imagine Kalamazoo strategic vision and master plan, to fund the aspirational projects that support that. And these all have the hope of really making the life of every individual in this city better and making the vitality of this city everything that it can be. I'd like to kind of remind everybody here, if I can steal a quote from yourself, Mayor, that this is a marathon and not a sprint. So, we're going to talk about a lot of the things that we're doing. But I'd also like to say this is the second full year of operations, and I'm trying to kind of take in the magnitude of what we've done and what we still have before us as we look at this budget. I would also like to say that this is a product of the Board of Directors, and the names are on screen here. I'm not going to read them all out, several, two commissioners and the mayor, as well as people who have given up time from their lives, their busy lives in the community, to be a part of the Board, to help shape it, to make sure that the governance and the transparency and the accountability are absolutely everything that they can be, to go out and to listen in the community what people are saying, to spread the word about the foundation. And I really can't thank each of them enough for the time that they volunteered to give us. I'd also like to thank the staff members, Deputy City Manager Laura Lamb, as well as Kevin Ford, Katie Riley, and Chad Went, who do the work, not alone, of course. We're a large city, and the Foundation for Excellence-funded programs are executed by city staff. But these people, this is a full-time job, and it's tremendous to see what they've been able to do in two years and to see how interested and engaged and hungry they remain to keep the work improving every day. I'd also like to point out the timeline, so this isn't kind of a one-and-done meeting. As with the previous years, the way that this works is that staff and board members are engaged with the community, engaged with the vision, engaged with the master plan all year long. We come together to create a draft budget that's presented to the Finance Committee of the Board and then recommended to the Board of Directors. There's no action requested at that first review. It's then brought to the commission here, no actions requested, we're reviewing it. This would then go back to the Foundation for Excellence Board of Directors, where it would be recommended formally to be adopted by the city commission in its budget if it's all fit. So, that's the timeline here. You'll also see Imagine Kalamazoo, year two update in October, which will go kind of a deep dive into Imagine Kalamazoo goals and objectives. November, there'll be a city commission budget work session, which is going to talk about budget things, and of course, Foundation for Excellence is among them. And then in December, there'll be the city commission possible consideration for the fiscal year 2020 budget. So, getting directly into projects, I don't want to linger too long, but I also want to say, you know, this is what we do, this is the work. And one of the things that we've heard so much positive feedback from is the ability to accelerate the removal of lead service, water services in our city. So, we're able to get the... We're doing about 80 homes a year that we wouldn't be able to do without FFE dollars, and this accelerates it down to about a 20-year timeline. For infrastructure investment, we've repaired and replaced more than eight miles last year. So, eight miles of sidewalk repaired and replaced, and those are aligned with the Imagine Kalamazoo strategy of working within a quarter-mile of a school or a community asset so that we're focused specifically on where people are going to do the things that they need to do. 2020 is going to be a continuation of that, the most urgent investments in that quarter-mile around those community assets. SuperRec is one of the three flagship youth programs of the city. It's the only free drop-in summer recreation program, really, for a city of our size in Michigan and regionally. It served 400 unique youth in 2019. That's 96 more than last year, and that's because we listened to the community and we added a location. Okay, and that's Rockwell Park, and we've built a structure there that's modeled off the one at La Croix Park, which will be up and running next year, so that we've expanded dramatically the ability to serve families and youth with all summer-long, all-day-long, meal-included, free drop-in youth program. It's an unprecedented program that I think we should all continue to celebrate. So, 2020 will see the expansion that includes that facility at Rockwell Park. All Things Possible, 2019 and 2020 have a focus on expanding the diversity of the programs that are offered. So, this is Chad Went, again, youth coordinator, getting the group out to Western, out to Stryker, getting hands-on, seeing horizon-building activities, and making sure that the summer slide is minimized. Here, we're at the Air Zoo, and we've got hands-on with an airplane actually behind All Things Possible. It says, "Do not touch the controls," which I think gives a sense of gravity to the complication of an airplane. And that was 50 participants this year, which is consistent with the previous two years. Like I say, they're focused on quality and expanding the offerings as opposed to just the actual number. So, this is YOU Summer Youth Employment. Last year was $393,000 of wages and benefits that went to the 340-plus participants in the program. So, this is all summer, this is employment, this is skill-building, this is hands-on. Here, they're at a talent tour at Stryker. So, they're in one of Stryker's test rooms, seeing the facility, what the company does, how they're related to healthcare. And 2020 is going to continue delivering that high-quality experience to the participants of YOU. Youth Mobility Fund, this is new this year. We piloted it with the Summer Youth Program to see how it was going to work and what kind of capacity we could expect, but we're at the end of the very first month of totally free, unlimited fare with your high school ID to all Kalamazoo Public School high schoolers. So, at the end of September, we have already about 20,000 rides. So, just if we can linger on that number for a second, 20,000 bus trips from 3,900 high schoolers. And these are job sports, we've got survey information, we know why they're doing this, we know why they're invested in it. And 2020 is going to be monitoring this, it's going to be sustaining it, it's going to be making sure that we've got full coverage of everybody who can take advantage of it. And I've got a few extra slides for Youth Mobility because it's kind of near and dear to my heart, and it's really a very, very large program that touches so many lives in this city. Metro, who has been absolutely instrumental in making this happen, they have done really good rollout and orientation at all the high schools, or the two high schools involved in Phoenix. And they had these blank sheets, "My bus path is important to me because..." And so here we have the answer of one young lady at Loy Norx. "I feel of independence, I can be anywhere, anytime, and I can come home safe and sound." Which I think is a pretty significant statement. From, you can see a teacher here, they've inserted students. "My student's bus pass is important to me because I don't have to worry about how they're going to get home." The schools used to have to buy bus tokens, they used to have to worry about if the kids were getting a ride, who were they getting a ride with, where were they going? Now they know the bus is outside, they know the timing, and they can coordinate that way. I think maybe the most powerful one is just its freedom. So, you've got somebody who maybe couldn't make it to a gifted program, who maybe couldn't get home from a sport, maybe whose parent had to leave work early and sacrifice that income to pick them up. So, I think the statement of freedom is a really significant one for this program. Now, you'll recognize some faces here. This is just, I think, three Mondays ago out front of City Hall. This was the Rhythm Coming for Classy Kids, which was the business development... Excuse me, Business Development Fund loan from this year. It allowed that company to double their inventory. So, they had one bus, now they've got two, and they can serve the community in a whole new way. In addition to that, they've rolled out 52 grants this year, and that's totaled about $200,000 invested in small businesses and entrepreneurs in this city. And really, we're just scratching the surface, 2020 is going to continue that. Affordable Housing, we hear a tremendous amount about affordable housing, and we want everybody to know that we're listening and we're working, and this will be reflected in the budget. You want to see what an organization values, you look at their budget, and you're going to see this year that affordable housing is really chief among them. So, 137 units were built or rehabilitated in 2019 in collaboration with partners in the community. 2020 is going to continue that investment. And really, the focus here is going to be access to housing in a variety of ways. So, we have to make the housing, we have to rehabilitate the housing, we have to make sure that the stock is there, but we also have to remove policy barriers. We also have to remove any other barriers for renting, to get into a rental, to get into a purchase of a home. So, 2020 is going to have a very, very deep focus on affordable housing. And this is actually an east side, we did a tour just to see what we had been building, and this was an east side home put together, you can see by Habitat for Humanity. Fits in the block perfectly. We talked to a neighbor and they said they loved it, they were just so glad to see a new house going up. So, housing, like so many things, is really multifactorial. A lot of the things that a city does, or any government does, certainly any of the things that we can fund as the Foundation for Excellence, aren't necessarily, you know, it's not an exchange building, it's not a blimp floating over town. A lot of it's quiet, a lot of it's hard to see if you're not involved with it. But one of the things that we can be most proud of is that we achieved zero foreclosures on owner-occupied residential homes this year, for the first time. This was in conjunction with the county. We've done some pretty deep research on this, we're probably unique in having done that. It's never been the case in our city in any of our lifetimes that we've had zero foreclosures. So, people were put on a payment plan, or if they were in extreme medical distress, those fees were waived by the county, and they are no longer in arrears. This was started as a pilot program last year on the north side by the county. We've expanded it to the city, and we'd like to just be a zero foreclosure city. We'd like to keep that program going. If you're an owner-occupied, if you're most in need, most likely to succeed, we want the county to be working with you to make sure that you stay in your home. And this year, 85%, it was 27 of the 32 homes, were in the north side, east side, and Edison neighborhoods. So, those are people who were overwhelmingly fixed-income seniors, or people who'd just come out of the hospital for medical emergencies, who are in their homes now, and will be in their homes all year because of this program. So, nobody would know it was there, nobody would see it, nobody would hear about it unless we take a little moment now and then to speak about it. So, 2020, like I say, is going to maintain that focus. Now, Farmers Market is an interesting one. This is one of our major capital cultural shared space assets in the city. Everybody here has been there, I hope, like myself, goes there as often as possible. It features prominently in the Edison Neighborhoods Plan. For access to fresh food was number six in their plan. Number eight was to make the Farmers Market ADA accessible and the trail ADA accessible. So, you saw in September a presentation from Director Fletcher from Parks and Rec, so I won't go into too much detail, but the foundation's going to, as in their budget, significant support for the Farmers Market renovation. And again, this connects it to the trail for the first time, so people from all over the city and even the region can get there on bicycle, can buy fresh food. And you'll see 40% increase in vendor spaces. That's more vendors, more vendors... That's more vendors, more value-added products being sold, and then it's just a more pleasant experience with 100 added parking spaces. So I touched on this a little bit with the foreclosure, is, okay, this is great, but how is anybody going to know about it? And we have really gone long on engagement, because we feel the need to speak in detail about the questions that we're trying to address, the way that we're trying to address them with the Imagine Kalamazoo Plan, and then to really track that and have people build a relationship with the project, so that they can always know that they can come to us for honest answers and proof of results. So there's a few screenshots up here. Some of the ways that we're addressing this are social media posts, the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Projects page on the website, which you'll see again at the two-year anniversary, I'm sure. That goes into each project in fair detail to show you where it is and what's involved for resources. We've been doing some marketing videos and animations, some explainer videos for more complex projects to explain how they work. We are going again this year with the newsletter. It's a 16-page, full-color newsletter that's sent to 30,000, 31,000 addresses in the city. So this is homes that are owned, this is landlords that live wherever they live but own property, and then everybody who lives in those rentals. So it's about 31,000. This is a screenshot of one of the pages, this is the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Spread, so this goes into the five programs that they funded this year, STEAM Academy, Patient Care Academy, I see a look in it, people changes on there for sure, Commissioner, Momentum Urban Employment Initiative, and the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. So this is written to be very accessible and to let people know what we're doing. This isn't something that can be boiled down to, you know, 1% increase in widgets moved from left to right. These are extremely complex problems and often very complex solutions. It deserves the space, and people deserve a durable product that they can hold up in eight months and say, "Well, you said this." Right? They deserve that, and we put this out there, it's the ability to communicate with everybody in a way that we can all stick to and hold ourselves accountable to. So this would be the investment in affordable housing. And at this point, with the help of Clerk Borling, I'm really happy to be able to roll out a tool that we've developed with staff that shows the tax savings by neighborhood, as well as the investment in aspirational projects by neighborhood, and by year, and by goal area, that's interactive, and it's public, and it's available to everybody. It was made live on our website today, so if anybody's watching or listening at home or on a laptop or a phone, it's smartphone-capable in the audience, you can go to kalamazoo.org, kalamazuacity.org/ffe, and you'll go down, you'll find, you know, say, there'll be an icon right there, you click on that, and you can follow along. So I'm going to grab, do you have the mouse over there? Okay. So this is the landing page you see. And just to orient us really quickly, we have the property tax savings on the left, we have the aspirational projects in the middle, and then the budget stabilization on the right. So Scott, if you could click on, say, "Learn More" under Tax Savings, this will take us to, and I realize everyone in the audience, the font's small, so I apologize that you won't be able to read it directly, but again, this is there for everybody to explore. Choose a neighborhood to click on, Scott, you can say, "That looks like Millwood." So this shows, for Millwood, that there was $4.2 million in taxes saved, total, over the last three years. The pie charts on the right break it down to industrial, commercial, residential, and then residential and commercial also broken out by rental and owner. So this is part of the commission directive, and as well as the board's directive, to have maximal transparency and accountability. We're putting this out there in a way that private foundations don't, because we feel that it's been asked, and that it's expected of us, and that we want in 10 years to be able to point at this and say, "The plan says we should invest here in core neighborhoods in these areas, and here's what we've done." Okay? This is fueled by budget numbers from the annual budget for the city, and by tax assessment numbers from the city. The Upjohn Institute of Employment Research assessed the numbers, they've been validated. So what you're seeing here is really a dollar-for-dollar map of tax savings. So Scott, if you can click on, yeah, you could do reset filters, so it takes you back to the top level. You can filter by neighborhood, and you can see the type of inventory that's in each neighborhood. So it's a very powerful access that's really never existed before, and is, as far as we know, unique to Kalamazoo. So Scott, if you could bounce back to home there, we'll go to the middle one. So this is aspirational projects. You have the map again, and the darker the blue, the more has been invested in the neighborhood. You'll see as the total, just as a side note, that's not the total number of dollars that are allocated, but this is the total dollars that are budgeted with a location. So for example, Youth Mobility Fund has, say, $500,000 budgeted. That money isn't spent yet, because it hasn't been spent throughout the year, so it's not represented here. There are also ongoing financial activities in this year that'll show up over time. So we'll keep this updated on a quarterly basis, or on a rolling basis as needed. So if you click a neighborhood, Scott, you could choose anyone you like. That's where I live. So $2.4 million. On the right, it shows you the areas and the dollars that are in those, so affordable housing, economic development, infrastructure, neighborhood activation, park enhancements, youth development. So if it's youth development, these are anonymous data points, but it's the actual address of the person using the service. So it's that granular, it's that specific. And now, Scott, if you click on, for example, you could do reset filter and then click on the pie chart. So if you're interested in knowing complete neighborhood investments, it'll show you the total in that goal area, and it'll show you where it's been spent in the neighborhoods. Now, keep in mind, second full year of operation. We picture this in five years on down the line, when we add new tools to this portfolio. It'll be extraordinarily powerful, and we're very proud that it backs up the transparency and accountability initiatives of the Foundation for Excellence Board and the commission's commitment to the city. So Scott, I think we could probably back out of this tool. And again, there's the address, kalamazuacity.org/ffe-dashboard. If you go to the Foundation for Excellence's website, this will be right in the middle, you can't miss it. We give them to the draft budget presentation. So this is the aspirational program table. I hope it's legible to everybody in the audience, it's a bit bright. But we see the programs that we've discussed, and at the bottom, you'll see affordable housing is $2.275 million. It's a very sizable portion of this year's request. To page two, FFE Personnel and Operating expenses, the FFE will be incorporating into its budget for the first time, the operational expenses that include everything from the annual audit, to insurance, to board liability insurance, to investment expenses. Now for budget stabilization and property tax stabilization, those are defined in the bylaws, section 9.03, how they are calculated. So for budget stabilization, that was begun at $3.8 million and has been escalated based on the municipal cost index. That's done by management services, the board concurs with that, and is presented every year for approval. The property tax reduction is likewise pegged to a formula, which is based on the increase in assessed value. So we see this year, the total bottom-line draft allocation is $24.924 million for all three areas. Now again, I'd like to click back to the aspirational, and if I can reuse the same stolen quote from you this evening, Mayor Hopewell, "Marathon, not a sprint." So we see areas of interest, we see areas of deep alignment with Imagine Kalamazoo, we see areas that everybody agrees we need to invest in, and we also realize that this is the second full year of operations, and over five years, over 10 years, this is going to have such a deep impact on our ability to achieve the goals of Imagine Kalamazoo for the city of Kalamazoo, that it's hard to even really contemplate. I thank again the board, and I thank again staff, all city staff, Parks and Rec, Public Services, for putting up with us, constantly asking about what they're doing, getting involved in their programs and projects. And thank you this evening for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Cunningham?
Mine is, I guess, a question or a statement. Just in regards to this portion, this actual slide here, next time, and I know that this is a draft, but next time, can we get numbers from the previous year, so we can kind of compare and contrast, and then also get some dialogue as to some of those changes? And like I say, I know that it'll be coming before us again, and that information will be provided, but as citizens, they probably wouldn't be able to put these numbers into context in regards to what they mean, so.
Absolutely. Commissioner Cunningham?
First of all, thanks, Steve, that was terrific. What a wonderful display, really great. And thanks to the people who are putting up the money for all this. I didn't see anything on there for shared prosperity, or is that funded for this coming year?
Absolutely, it's a good question. So this year's allocation discusses new dollars. So fund model dollars, for example, Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo was allocated with $2 million, the High Impact Fund, last year. There were programs and projects toward that, there are remaining funds to be budgeted and allocated, so absolutely, I would expect future ongoing allocations, absolutely. Same with, you know, the Youth Mobility Fund will be kept up at a sort of level to allow these projects to happen, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, I'm gonna, I have a couple of things. One, you had said during the drill down into the measurement tool, that youth programs, we could get all the way down, where I think you meant to say, we're measuring it down to the child and where they live, but you can't get their address, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Commissioners, on the foreclosure slide, just want to make sure we know that's tax foreclosure. It's important for us to use the word "tax foreclosure," because a bank foreclosure is not, we don't handle that, that's the bank, between the bank and the individual. Taxes are between the individual and the city. So I just want to make sure that for future, we really need to adjust that slide and make sure we have tax in there, for clarity. And then I'm going to ask Director Baker to come forward, if he would, with you, Mr. Brown. I want to talk about lead lines, and I know that the slide said 80. We've been able to increase by 80, but I think it's important that we talk about what we have done, because we, not only do we have Foundation for Excellence, everybody, we have a budget that we do work as well. So you didn't see public safety in there, you didn't see administration, all the other functions of our government. So my question to you, in this year, how many lead lines outside of the Foundation for Excellence, lead service lines, excuse me, that we're removing?
Yes, sir, thank you, Your Honor, thank you, City Commission, City Manager. Beginning in the year 2016, we started accelerating our pace of lead service line removals, utilizing primarily the water fund, that's a separate fund from general fund, and that's paid for by ratepayers. Beginning in 2017, we set the pace of 500 replacements per year. I've got some data here that I can pull up real quick. Generally, we overshot that number a little bit, we were 500 and some change in 2017. In 2018, we were at 558 replacements. And then here in 2019, we've also leveraged some additional resources from the state of Michigan. So now in 2019, we're utilizing FFE funds, water ratepayer funds, as well as funds from the state of Michigan, and our goal this year, in 2019, is to replace 800 lead service lines. We're accelerating that pace yet again. We've worked out and have initial approval with the state of Michigan for a massive lead service replacement project next year in the east side neighborhood in Kalamazoo, also with Eastwood and Kalamazoo Township, and that goal for next year is 1,350 lead service line replacements. So now you're seeing us leverage our ratepayer funds, our FFE funds, and then funds from the state of Michigan as well.
Thank you, and just to add to that, since you said Eastwood, would you explain why we're doing work in Eastwood? Sometimes folks don't have a understanding of our services.
Correct, thank you, Your Honor. So the city of Kalamazoo owns and operates a large water utility. In fact, we're the fifth-largest water utility in the state of Michigan. Our services branch outside of the city boundaries. We serve all of our neighboring townships all around us, and we have a connected population of over 175,000 people in all the areas. This is a greater Kalamazoo, it's a regional water system, if you will, and in that, we also have lead service lines in Kalamazoo Township. We're also dedicated and committed to replacing those lead service lines in Kalamazoo Township. So when we talk about the water utility, we're really talking about a greater Kalamazoo area impact as well.
And can you also mention how the work has gone in parchment, as we've been supporting them through their crisis over the year?
Correct, thank you, Your Honor. Parchment is our newest customer community. Those of you that were with us through that last year, saw the city of Kalamazoo jump to action and connect parchment who had a contaminated water source. The city of Kalamazoo worked hand-in-hand with folks from the state of Michigan under an executive emergency order by the governor at the time, and connected, permanently connected parchment's water system. City Kalamazoo crews responded to that and got water flowing within six hours. Within 30 days, we had permanent connections in place and had them up and running with clean, fresh drinking water to replace their contaminated system. That relationship was signed into a long-term contractual agreement late last year, early this year, excuse me, and that relationship will continue for decades into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Brown, I just want to say thanks for the work, you know, you have been on this every single day, trying to navigate this and navigate us, and trying to connect the dots and find ways that we can make this transparent. You've used my quotes, and I appreciate that, but, you know, they're from someone else, but this is long-term, ongoing work. That's the work of your city, all the work we do is long-term, so we can look at this at the microcosm and say, "That didn't happen, this didn't happen." Yep, we're going to always have that, no matter what we do, whether it's FFE, or Foundation for Excellence, or whether it's our general fund budget. Someone's pothole doesn't get fixed, someone's street doesn't get fixed, because we are a broad, diverse, huge community, and we aren't able to do everything at every minute that everyone wants it done. But this is a long-term journey that we're on with the Foundation for Excellence and the budget that we have, general fund, and the opportunities we're going to have in the future from the developments that you see, that will be on the tax rolls, paying into making us better, making us greater. That's the work of city government, never stops, never sleeps, and it's always going to be ongoing, and there's always going to be things that we need to accomplish, perfectly imperfect, but heading in that direction. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice work. Mr. Manager, did you have anything to add?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Consent agenda, please.
We have 15 items for approval tonight, and 16th item will be held until October 21st.
Before you do that, I also want to welcome the Western Michigan University journalist students to the commission this evening, we're glad to have all of you. I know you'll have questions for all these guys and not me after the meeting, so welcome. Sorry, Mr. Manager.
No problem. First item, approval of the purchase of driver feedback/radar speed unit, signs from Carrier and Gable Incorporated through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchase Program in the amount of $112,655. Next is the approval of an agreement with the Kalamazoo County Road Commission for Engineering Services and Construction Associated with Drake Road Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Project in the amount of $120,345.50. Next is the approval of a contract with Vulcanah Construction for the construction of a recharge basin erosion control at Water Station 14, and the replacement of dam inspection steps located at Spring Valley Park in the amount of $134,900. Next is the approval of the purchase of a Trackless MT-7 tractor with snowblower, salt spreader, and angle boom with dust control system from Bell Equipment Company through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $169,126. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental with Hoffman Brothers Incorporated for the emergency reconstruction of a failed sanitary sewer railroad crossing in the amount of $250,000. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Corby Energy Service Incorporated as the cure-in-place sewer pipe lining vendor of record in the amount of of $301,564. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Activate Healthcare LLC for the oversight of a health clinic site improvements in the amount of $400,000. Next is the approval of a five-year lease for health clinic space at 1631 Southwest Nige Avenue in the amount of $258,000. Next is the adoption of a resolution adopting and approving the Seventh Amendment to revise brownfield plan implemented by the city of Kalamazoo Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Next is the approval of an easement with Westview Capital LLC for water main that is planned for installation as part of the Gilmore Farms Number Two, Phase Two Construction Project. Next is the authorization for the city manager to sign a letter agreement with KEPS Technologies Incorporated to extend their existing Metro Act right-of-way permit for five additional years. Next is the acceptance of a grant from the Irving S. Gilmore Foundation in the amount of $75,000 for the creation of a non-motorized transportation and green infrastructure plan. Next is the approval of a recommendation to the city, or to the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners that Gary Lee McCormick be reappointed as one of the city's three representatives to the Central County Transportation Authority. Next is the approval of the following appointments to the Community Development Act Advisory Committee, the appointment of Megan Bualda as the Edison Neighborhood Representative for a term expiring on March 31, 2022, and the appointment of James Martin as an at-large member for a term ending on March 31, 2022. Next is the approval of the minutes from the city commission meetings on August 19 and September 16, 2019. And finally, approval of a purchase agreement with the Kalamazoo County Land Bank for the acquisition of 640 Lake Street for the Farmers Market Project and Bank Street Realignment Plan in the amount of $9,157 plus closing cost.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 15. Hold items 16 until October 21, 2019, and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city is their motion. Moved by Vice Mayor Knott.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Urban. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Knott?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. Mr. Manager, G1, please.
Approval of an updated grant agreement between the Stryker-Johnston Foundation and the city of Kalamazoo in the amount of $98 million that extends support for the mission of the Foundation for Excellence from 2019 through the 2022 fiscal year, and further direct the city manager to sign all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any report?
Yeah, I just want to start this off, and one, recognize this for what it is. It's a tremendous gift to the city. It's really an investment in the work we're doing. You just heard all the great work that's being done by the Foundation for Excellence and really investing in Imagine Kalamazoo. And I just want to go back to the beginning when this was all created and work was being done on it. At the time, we were faced with multiple years of reduction, service reductions, and figuring out where our next revenue source is going to come from. And if you recall, I held, I convened a Blue Ribbon Revenue Panel that came up with some options that worked, but others, mainly the municipal income tax, was not one of the options that was recommended. And this, that recommendation of a municipal income tax actually really became the basis of moving forward with a different revenue structure that involved an investment, not taxing our residents. And so that's really what this is all about. It's a belief in what we're doing in Kalamazoo and in investing those dollars appropriately towards the Imagine Kalamazoo strategic vision that's been created.
Any questions for the manager? Hearing none, anyone in the audience wanting to comment on this item, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within our city. Seeing no one, Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve. Is their motion?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cunningham?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Cooney. We are in discussion. Commissioner Urban?
Well, I would just say that this is a continuing, this allows us to continue what was begun three years earlier, because we're, we have not endowed the Foundation for Excellence with the endowment yet. That's the donors, the chief donors have committed themselves to being in charge of that, and that seems that they need some more time for it. And the good side about that is now we have some evidence of how this innovative funding program is actually working. If we had tried to raise money from donors around the country with only promises that we had two years ago, it would have been tough. So I don't regard the fact that we have to continue this, our funding of the aspirational programs and the two other aspects of the Foundation for Excellence's work through ongoing funding this way, because now we have a good story to tell, and I think it'll be relatively easy once, to put the, turn on the ignition to get the money that we need from around the country. I'm confident of that, and I'm counting on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson? I just want to reinforce some of our city managers' comments in setting the stage for this, and that was the number of years we've spent here on the commission doing the heartbreaking work of cutting great programs every single year. And the opportunity that this has given us in so many ways in the last three years to change the way we're doing the work that we've been needing to do. And I think it's just, it's phenomenally important. I believe that the work that has been done is responsible, important work. One of the things that I'm always interested in is the investment we're making in our own infrastructure. And I know in a recent conversation with Director Jim Baker, he talked about the fact between 2016, our budget for capital improvements, that budget has increased by tenfold since that time, which is fantastic and the kind of work the city needs to be doing for everyone in the city. And as a matter of fact, we're talking about increasing that even more dramatically this coming year in our budget. So I appreciate it. It gives us some room to dream and act on our dreams. So, thanks for bringing this to us, and look forward to may more great things coming. Other comments, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Knott?
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. Mr. Manager?
Adoption of an ordinance postponing or delaying the city's opt-in of permitting commercial adult-use marijuana establishments in the city until June 1, 2020. Adopting this ordinance permits city staff to bring proposed zoning and licensing ordinances to the city commission in conformance with the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which was adopted by voter initiative last November.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anyone in the audience wanting to comment on this item, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within our city.
Come back and sign it. Just get up and get out.
Good evening.
What's up? What's up? Long time no see, everybody. Chris Swomhoff, 1407 Bryant Street. Bobby, also, didn't mean to blow you off earlier. I didn't realize that was you tapping me. What I wanted to do is kind of urge that I don't think we should push this down. Battle Creek is getting ready to cross and probably be one of the first cities to do it, and I think that's disadvantageous for us. I also wanted to read another reason that I'm worried about that, is I started reading specifically the 1994 ordinance that we passed on July 15, amending our medical marijuana, and specifically the legislative prerogative Part D in that scares me a lot. The language seems to suggest that the city can, after giving out these applications, can at any time, for any reason, pull them back. It says unlimited. There is no limit to number. There's no reason. There is also, under it, a block for grandfathering, so there's no protection. If you guys can pull it back, I encourage you guys to read that. It's legislative prerogative. Before it, there's also a, I can't remember the language, there's something before it, indemnification. And that language is incredibly specific, so specific that I started looking around in the rest of the state. And we are the only city in the state of Michigan that has that language. So I'd encourage us to look at that. It concerns me. I really would also encourage, as we move forward, we're talking about these couple of community meetings before we write the language up, I'd like clarification on how much those community meetings are going to matter, so that it's not just puff and smoke and we do something anyway. Because again, this language, we don't have language similar to the rest of the state for our medical marijuana. Kalamazoo also is the most expensive city in the state for medical marijuana. You can get an app called LeadMabs and look it up. I have to drive six hours, and y'all know I'm as local as local gets. If I could afford to buy my stuff here, I would. I have to drive six hours to Bay City and Saginaw, which also happened to be leading the state in school turnarounds right now, because they were the most open medical marijuana. So I encourage us to not recreate this mistake. Like, don't, I know you guys don't always trust me so much, so look at Bay City, look at Saginaw, and look at how much our public schools are going after them. Look at what they did with medical marijuana versus what we did, and consider that. Maybe if you want to postpone this a couple months, do that, kick it down the road a little bit, but look into this more. This is, and I could bounce and be cool with Kalamazoo. My life would be much easier. I come to these meetings, I care about this because the kids in my neighborhood, because they're the ones that got kicked around, and they're the ones that deserve all this social equity. And they're the ones that are going to get left out if we have this language. So prove me wrong. Read it. Go to Bay City and Saginaw. Ask them. Look at the other state language, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Linda Palmetier from the owner of the SPOT Laboratory in Kalamazoo. The SPOT has been a safety compliance facility in Kalamazoo since 2014, and we are gradually becoming one of the most respected labs in the state. Caregivers, growers, and processors have relied on the SPOT to help ensure the safety of their patients and clients. Currently, we are one of only three laboratories within the state of Michigan to do all the medical safety compliance testing. Backlogs for each lab are growing due to the increased demands for testing and the already severe shortage of safety compliance facilities amongst the state, in the state. When the state issues a license for adult use, necessity for testing will be of even a greater scale. The lack of an ordinance in the city of Kalamazoo will prevent the SPOT from testing any products available for the adult-use market. This will create even a more severe bottleneck at testing facilities and lead to a shortage of clean cannabis products for your constituents and all the patients around the state. This scenario encourages the black market activity and places the people of the state at risk of encountering dangerous, untested products. We ask that you consider, at the very least, writing an ordinance to allow the operation of safety compliance facilities in the city of Kalamazoo. This would allow the SPOT to continue to assist the state in assuring the safety of cannabis products available to the people of the state of Michigan. It is our responsibility at the SPOT and as citizens of this community to assure these products are free from the dangerous contaminants that have reached the public health crisis surrounding the use of black market cannabis-based vape cartridges across the country. We ask that you please consider these points. The SPOT will certainly make itself available to help the city commission in any way possible, but time is of the essence. Thank you for considering this matter. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Jay Fleming. I am a resident of Stewart Neighborhood. I have been a resident of Kalamazoo my entire life. The things I've heard today, as someone who's been a caregiver for the last eight years, point to me that we're doing the right thing on holding this back. I hear people talking about not getting, being able to get medical cannabis in Kalamazoo, not backlogs of testing for medical cannabis in Kalamazoo, and I've heard from all over the market that there is a shortage of flower, period, on the medical market. What we're doing here, I think, gives the city time to look at that issue, because as I heard at one of the earlier meetings, we gave out something like 18 licenses, and we have something like three medical businesses running. That has nothing to do with your effectiveness at making this an open business for other people. That has to do with issues with the cannabis industry and the money coming into our state because of that. And I am, I am very hopeful by the language that I hear coming from the commissioners, by their interest in the equity program, the equity applicant status, at interest in things like the smaller licenses, like microbusinesses, that somewhat disincentivize some of these larger businesses. And I really, really appreciate that what you are doing with this is not the easy way out, that I've heard Bobby Hopewell himself talk about the missed opportunities that we had, and the difficulties and the failures that we may have had in the way we did this the first time. And I applaud you all for admitting to that and looking for solutions that will be better for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to address this item? Seeing no one, Commissioners, the requested actions, a motion to adopt the ordinance, is their motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cunningham?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Cooney. We're in discussion. Commissioner Anderson?
Just one quick thing. I just want to remind people that there, there was a group of people who were in town today for meeting at 5 o'clock from one portion of the agency that's managing this process, and that is the group that is focused on the social equity piece. Now, I think 41 or 42 identified communities that will be capable of taking advantage of that in the state of Michigan. And so they gave a presentation today, they had some links that perhaps we will have on our website, maybe, or some way for people to see that, I'm hoping. A very nice explanation of what, in some ways, is still a somewhat complicated topic for how this is going to work out. And I can say that now we've had folks in town, I think this was maybe the third time that folks have been coming down from Laura to do these kinds of presentations, and I am beginning to feel like I'm getting a better handle on the nuances of it at this point. And I'm also thinking that by doing that work, that we're going to have, you know, the best rollout that we can possibly have here in the city of Kalamazoo. In addition, I mean, although we can push back to this date, this does not require us this to wait until January 1st. It gives us that timeframe, but if things are accomplished more quickly, then it is possible for our delayed opt-in to occur more quickly also.
Hey, Commissioner, you meant June 1st. You said January 1st.
I'm sorry, June 1st.
Commissioner Cunningham?
This is a question to our attorney, and it, I guess, piqued my interest based on what Ms. Palmetier brought up forward. So with the delayed opt-in, does that mean that at any point in time, and this is just for clarification, that we couldn't present other pieces to the ordinance to opt-in to?
Correct.
All right. That's all.
Other discussion? So Commissioners, I would love to see if we could make this in April 1. I know it doesn't require us to go to June 1, but I- I know it doesn't require us to go to June 1, but I, I guess I'd like to apply some, I don't want to say pressure, but some focus to move forward. I know that, you know, we talked about what the Attorney General is going to be doing and, but we know that that may not have really much effect anyway, at least from what I learned from the, what I thought I learned from the city attorney today. You know, I, I'm all about the delay, delayed opt-in. I think that needs to happen. I would rather see that done in a six-month period rather than a eight-month, an eight-month period. Again, I won't be here, so that'll be for y'all to determine. Some of y'all, two of us won't be here for sure. But I just wanted to throw that out, just for the audience's sake. I cannot make motions as the mayor, or at least as the chair of the meeting. So I can't, unless I can get someone else to make that motion, it doesn't go anywhere. So, anyway, that's just my thoughts. Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way as far as not, not going into June, because I want to acknowledge the fact that we have to do this as right as we possibly can, and it's important to not make equity just a word. And that's what it will be if we don't take the opportunity to really dig in and get this as right as we can. And I know it won't be perfect, but also to the point of not dragging it out, so to speak. I know everybody is very busy, but I know this was lifted up at our last meeting to have some sort of plan in place so that the community at large knows that this is not just a, we're going to get to it and, and there's nothing else. So yeah, I definitely am in support of sooner than later, but, but definitely doing this so that the equity piece, it really hits who it's intended to hit.
Thank you. Commissioner Irvin.
Let Commissioner Cunningham speak.
Actually, I'm going, you haven't had your chance. He'll get a chance.
Okay. Well, I'm a little, would like to have us discuss a little bit, moving it to, the date to April is fine for now, but if there's as much delay and confusion at the state level than there's been so far, we may have to move it to, to June anyway. And so if, if making it April is going to actually help things go faster in Kalamazoo, great, but if it's, if it's just to display our earnestness on this program, I, I don't, I just need to have some reassurance that, that if we have to push it back again on account of other, of delays of one sort or another, we still have primarily as our goal that we do this right rather than we do it fast. So I just want to get that in there. I, I won't be, I'll bring that amendment, that change, but I, I would definitely probably vote for it if, after discussion.
Commissioner Cunningham.
I just wanted to ask the attorney what his thoughts were in regards to capacity of his administration to move that date forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. While I appreciate the desire for urgency, I passed out in front of you, and this was at the last meeting, there was a request for a, what would a public participation plan look like? And there's a paper that says adult-use marijuana. In cooperation with Christina Anderson and Pete Eldridge of the Planning and Economic Development Department, we put together this timeframe, if you will, that meets the June 1 deadline. Here's some things I want you to consider. First off is that we're in the process of working on this now, in fact, gathering ordinances from other communities, looking at best practices. The other thing that I also want to point out is that even though there are some 41 communities that are social equity communities, like Kalamazoo, and I don't know who provided the information that was at your places at the dais regarding Michigan Urban Core Communities, I don't know who provided this matrix. It was not me, it was not the clerk, it was presidential place. I would point out that several of those communities are not social, social equities communities. Ann Arbor, Battle Creek, Dearborn, Grand Rapids, Jackson Lansing are not social equity, social equity communities. So what they're doing doesn't necessarily going to mirror what we want to do. And as I indicated at the, the last meeting, and what I heard again this evening at the five o'clock meeting, there is a desire on the part of this community and this commission to make sure that social equity means something more than words on the page, that we actually are, that it becomes an actionable item, if you will, by putting those people who are truly impacted by marijuana enforcement, giving them the tools and the ability to engage in the industry. So with that, looking at the, the public participation plan, while it begins in December, it'll begin even before that, there's, I'll be attending a, a meeting in Millwood in November. But I also point out that, kind of in the words of Andy Williams, is the most wonderful time of the year because beginning with November, city offices are closed on Veterans Day, two days for around Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years. Those are basically two days holidays themselves. We also have the Martin Luther King Day of, of caring and, and service. So between now and the first part of February, we're going to lose roughly two weeks of work anyway because city offices will be closed. The other thing that you also have to keep in mind is the, there's a zoning ordinance component to this. That has to go to the planning commission before it comes to you. And so that is already worked in there for it to go to the planning commission. The only, the only thing we could probably, if we really worked at it, is we might be able to, to move it to a May 1 deadline at best, at best. I would like to have a little more room here in order to thoughtfully approach the subject. And I, my preference would be to leave it till June 1. The other thing that is, we don't work in silos. We try to work collaboratively between my department, planning, public safety, and of course, the clerk's office if we do some type of licensing. And between now and the first part of May, Mr. Borling's office has to administer, what I believe, three elections. And so his staff is going to be busy and he will be busy with, with those obligations. So all of that taken place because of holidays, because of the workload of the clerk, we've suggested the June 1 deadline. That was, that was not, that was picked with some thought in mind.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Knott.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Sorry about this. So a motion was made to truncate this?
There was, there was no motion made. The motion was the existing motion.
I see. Okay. So just motion to adopt this?
The motion as presented is the motion.
Got it. Yes. Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, motion carried. We're now at Citizens' Comm, or Mr. Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, Your Honor. I'd just like to take a moment. Unfortunately, I will not be able to be at the next meeting, which is the 21st of October. I'll be at a national conference, but realizing that it's probably going to be the last meeting with the regular, the last regular meeting with the gentleman to my right and to the left, I just want to take a moment and, and thank you both. You have been colleagues along the way, walked beside me, in front of me, behind me, pushing. And Don, Mr. Commissioner Cooney, I, I don't know anyone with a bigger heart than you, especially for the poor, and, and what you've done over the years has really, really brought us to the point of shared prosperity Kalamazoo, and that work will be ongoing, and I'm sure you'll still be involved, but thank you so much. And Mr. Mayor, what can I say? You've been a great partner, colleague, and it's going to be sad moment to see you leave. I know you'll still be involved, but it's also the fact that the three, there's three people left on this commission that hired me and two of them are leaving, so both of you. So thank you for your support along the way and the great work. And you are nothing more than a greatest cheerleader for the city and for the staff, pushing us forward every day. And I know it's been kind of yin and yang, but we will always remember that and your work will still continue through us. So thank you.
Mr. Attorney, you have a report this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Anything you want to mention absentee balloting, maybe, since you got the microphone?
Sure. Absentee ballots are available from the clerk's office. You can get those ballots by, you can come in person. You can call us and we will send you an absentee ballot application. There's still plenty of time now. The, oh, your voted ballot has to be back by 8:00 PM on Election Day, so there's still plenty of time to get a ballot, vote it, and get it back, so it'll be counted.
Thank you, sir. We're now at Citizens' Comment. Any citizen wanting to comment on anything this evening, please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city of Kalamazoo. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jody Dozeman. I live in Kalamazoo.
Could you move the microphone towards you? Thank you.
Okay. I, I've been talking about Stadium Drive Apartments, and you guys released, when I turned in from Interact, some notes stating their spend-down was a little haywire, and it's still haywire with the other projects there. You guys took out nursing groups. Well, I got a letter from Interact stating that the nursing groups had been canceled. By that time, there was something going on with Bronson Hospital where there was nursing group Smart Heart coming to Stadium Drive Apartments to inform the people. It's like a classroom and little, little ideas, information about specific things like stroke or diabetes. Well, I happened to call the police, heard something out my door, stepped out my door and there was Heather. So I had police on the line, and she had skipped over me with the nursing group papers, hanging them on the clipboard, which is something else. I mean, my calendars with the clipboard are inside my apartment down the hall. Something would've been, it's been a while. But two times in two months, they were inside my door and almost to my living room, and there's no way you could slide a piece of paper in there doing that. Someone would have to walk in and set the paper on the floor. Well, when I was talking to Heather in the hall, I said, "Why are you missing me?" "Well, I didn't think you wanted nursing groups." We went through a shuffle, and I can't, I mean, I've clued them guys in on some of my attitudes towards what they're doing to some of them people there in a slight manner, but it's an obvious recognition, something's going on, and they were doing something wrong that I was ready to bust them for, and they knew it. Well, the letter was in my living room on the end table, so I believe Heather, this is suspicious to me, Heather knowing that that letter canceled them, skipped over my apartment? I mean, there's all kinds of little things like that. Why would, why would she do that and make that kind of conversation with me when obviously would the police recognize that I like those kind of things? Maybe I don't go to every one, but if there's time, yes, I do touch base because the one she skipped was diabetes. And I have diabetes in my family. My next-door neighbor has diabetes. So to help out, no is important. And I, I just found that really strange that she would, she would do that. I mean, there were times where the double-edged blade taped to the pole, walking, they were walking down the hall and brought it on the elevator. We had a bed that I was helping this lady move out to her husband's mother-in-law, her mother or something, and on Drake and Stadium, there was an accident. So there was the bed in the back of the truck. Now, that should be recorded on camera. How is it that Western doesn't take a concern when I inform them about someone doing that at Stadium Drive and some of the things going on? But boy, when I had a, you know, a knife, considered a fishing knife or something, and went through an episode with some foreigners, which I have really some premonitions and ideas about things at Stadium Drive again, and yes, they were back there, so I'm positive about that. You know, and then I'm trying to make connections, and I can only give you my opinion.
Ma'am, your time has expired. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening?
Good evening. My name's Cory King. I live in the southwestern neighborhood of Kalamazoo. I want to kind of piggyback off of what the city manager said earlier about Dr. Cooney, Commissioner Cooney. There was a great article in M-Live today about Dr. Cooney's work and the great things he's done for this city, this West Michigan in general. I was, I went to Western, as you can probably see, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Cooney, for everything you've done for the, not just city Kalamazoo, for all of West Michigan. And I just spoke to one of my art friends, one of your former colleagues here in West Michigan or Kalamazoo, Brandon Youngblood, who now works for CPS in McComb County now. So your work continues on through the people that you touched here in Kalamazoo throughout the entire state. So thank you, and I hope that you'll continue to be an inspiration to all of us here in Kalamazoo as we continue to find our journeys down the path of doing good work here in Kalamazoo. Thank you for that, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening? Good evening.
Hi. My name's Jeff Cardlin. I live in Kalamazoo, and I'm here to express my, I don't know, opposition to sanctuary city status of Kalamazoo. I believe sanctuary cities are an open invitation for the world to just come and crash our borders, and it, it causes way more problems than it solves. So I just want to express my opposition to it, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the commission? Seeing no one, we are at Commissioners' Comments. Commissioner Griffin? Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I want to say a couple things. One is, we've heard a lot tonight about the Foundation for Excellence, and I'm, I'm so grateful for the people that have made the funds available. That, that's just extraordinary. But I'm also struck by the creativity with which the, the city has spent the money. I mean, I think the programs that, that were outlined by Steve are just incredible and a national model, really. And I know a lot of that is due to Jim and Mayor Hopewell, who has been a real pusher for a lot of these programs. So we got a long way to go here. There's a lot of people still hurting in this community, but I think that Foundation for Excellence is just a, a gift of God, just a wonderful, wonderful thing. And then since this is the last meeting, I'll be with Jim Ritzema. I just want to say that despite him graduating from Ohio State, I am amazed at the integrity, the compassion, and the competence with which he has approached this job. We are so lucky to have this man as our city manager. So Jim, thank you so much for all you've done for the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor Hopewell. I wasn't, I was going to just pass, but something that Commissioner Cooney said kind of rubbed me a little bit the wrong way. He said that the money from the Foundation for Excellence is being spent. I think what he should say, and I'm going to just kind of correct him with your permission, is that money is being invested. There's a difference between spending money and investing money. This is, this is for the long haul, as you've heard Steve say and as the mayor say, and I just want to use this opportunity to, whenever we talk about the FFE, I prefer that we use the word investing in the future, investing in Kalamazoo rather than spending on Kalamazoo. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cunningham?
I just wanted to re-
I just want to reiterate to Ms. Palmetiere to follow up with our attorney's office with your concerns. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor?
Did it, did it work?
We hear you.
Here's a piece. Corey, it's great seeing you in the audience tonight. You, you took part of my comments. Don, that article was fantastic. I loved reading it and learning pieces about you that I wasn't aware of. I loved looking at the photo spread. Your hair hasn't changed over the years. It was, it was a lovely break in my afternoon, so, nice job, great work. It's been an honor to serve with you, and I know we'll have time to talk about that in the weeks to come. But I wanted to lift up the name Amy Stevens tonight. If you're not aware of who Amy Stevens is, she's a transgender woman who was fired from Garden City Funeral Home. She tomorrow will be one of three cases going before the United States Supreme Court. The Trump administration has suggested that, that discrimination based on whether or not you're transgender or based on your sexual orientation should be acceptable, that employers should have the right to decide whether or not they can fire workers because, again, of their gender identity or sexual orientation. So Amy Stevens is one of three cases. Again, she's from Garden City, Michigan, and if the position of the Trump administration is accepted by the court tomorrow, it would legalize discrimination and roll back decades of precedent governing sex discrimination claims based on, again, gender identity and sexual orientation. So I just wanted to publicly shout out to Amy. I've had the opportunity to meet her, and I want to thank her for her courage as she goes before the court tomorrow.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are adjourned.